Community Board, section. Community Board, yeah, and we are going to start it out with our student showcase. And we're gonna take trips?
Yep.
Okay, that's alright. We're gonna go through showcase in the manufacturing center.
Here it is here.
Not taken, I would say not taken.
I think he's chit-chatting, so. Okay.
We can, we can move into the community board.
We will jump into the board. This is your opportunity to interact with the board, any subjects you would like to, except, yes, stay with personal. So, does anybody have something they want to address?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have a question. I'm Heidi, Dr. Murray, and I have noticed that clearly we are developing in this area. And my question to you is, has there been any thought to, since the area is growing, how the school itself is growing, I mean, both schools? Space-wise, classroom size, any? I don't know, anything that goes along with our area developing at such a fast rate? And I know as well, people have also seen it, so. I don't know if that's been covered before, I tried to look at past minutes and didn't really see anything, so if there's been a point somewhere.
We've been declining more for so many years. At one time, we were almost 1200 too.
Yep.
And we haven't gotten back to nine.
No, no, we anticipate hopefully 900 next year, hopefully. And about 10 years ago, we were at 1160 kids. I think 1165 was, I think, where we topped, oh yeah. So, from, from a community growth standpoint, is first of all, we are involved and we are, you know, with, with the villages and the town of Lisbon, things like that. Making sure that, you know, we're in the loop about where new subdivisions are coming in and things like that too as well. Again, when we take a look at our, our, our school size, Merton Primary right now, the only thing we've really done different is, is we did take out the third grade large group area and created an art room. At one point, there was, you know, well over 500 again, fourth grade, you know, used to not be there, so again, we do have a lot of, Merton Primary School is, is, is tight, but we still do have some, some possible growth areas there too as well, because right now, we're, we're five-section school all the way up through second grade and more than likely for third grade next year too as well, we do have that room as well. Some of the basic restraints that we do have is, is we, we try not to have our, our families and students wouldn't really truly see that, whether it be a storage concern from, from that aspect too as well. But it is a question that gets often brought up about, hey, are we ready to absorb the influx of students that are gonna be coming through our doors and things like that? And very similar to what Dean said, and I know we've had conversations, and Andrew and I just had a small conversation about it too as well. As it relates to, do we have the room for it? We certainly do, and particularly this building, as well as when we take a look at the future schedules that we're looking at and being able to accommodate a growth of kids. To be able to do that, we certainly can handle it within our walls of our district at this point too as well, so.
And to the other part of the question about class size? That is a huge priority for the district and always has been maintaining small class sizes. So can you speak to the specifics of the small class sizes? Cause it does change based on grade.
Sure, sure. Typically, what we've done when we take a look at our open enrollment policies, our kindergarten through 5K through second grade, we kept them right around 20. Okay, that's when we, we set approximately 20 students. I know, I don't know what year it was when it hit 20, all of a sudden, we, we, one of the years, we hired a new teacher and things like that too. So, we try to stay 20 and under for kindergarten through second grade. For 4K, we have two adults in there. And it's for about two and a half, three hours, and there's a lot of different activities that happen there. So, we have pushed those to 23, 24 for our, our 4K situation there too. When we start to take a look at third and fourth grade, that typically when we would then go from five sections to four sections, running those up to right around 24, 25 is historically above what we've done. And then we do carry that over here to Merton Elementary School. But when we talk about Merton Elementary, it all depended on, you know, the class sizes and some of the dynamics of the groupings and things like that. Some literacy classes at 18, some of them have, you know, 24, 25. It all depends on, of the nuances of the schedule and things like that too. But we do truly believe that at one time, we were close to 1200 and we'll be lucky to get that 900 next year, if we are, we're gonna be truly blessed as well, but we feel that we strongly do have the room, and particularly at our class sizes, to absorb students across our 4K through eighth grade level too as well. And then if in fact, we do have ever needed to expand, about three or four years ago, we did another site analysis of our school, and particularly Merton Primary, and they gave us access points and opportunities where we could possibly build a wing onto the school. We also researched to say, we could possibly build another school if we wanted to in the backside of our property. We still do have the enough green space to roof ratio that we would possibly need. And again, it'd be my recommendation, and I'm just a kind of a recommend, recommender, we do have 37 acres out on the Plainview and Center Oak as well, and again, the district bought that 20, 2005?
When we were six? Yeah, we were getting the big numbers.
Getting the big numbers, so there is that, that, that district out there too as well. So, I feel strongly with the ability to absorb those and still maintain our strong class sizes that we, that, that our families and our board would come to expect.
When, when we had those large numbers, did we, cause right now, we have unlimited open enrollment.
Yep.
So when we had those big classes and I don't, maybe open enrollment was different back then than it is today, I don't know, it's a new, but did we limit then?
Yeah.
Open enrollment so that it was just kind of kids within our, our district boundaries? Is that how that works?
Yeah, it, it all went upon that class size, cause we didn't wanna set a, an open enrollment situation where it would trigger another section. I do.
And not even recently, perhaps, we've adjusted those, you know, there have been some grade levels here and there that had, you know, one seat open or two seats open or none.
Okay.
Because if we got more than that, then we have to have another section and have another teacher, and that doesn't make sense.
So then, just to follow up on the open enrollment question, each year, so if someone's open enrolled this year, and, and with all the development, if we had to get to that point where a class, a grade, you know, we had to limit, just because they're here this year, do we have to offer them a space next year? What's the state law?
Our policy states that once you're in, you're in.
Okay.
Our policy also states a sibling will also be in too as well.
Okay.
So, it, our policy is not, it's, it's not a year-to-year look at. So, once you have enrolled as a Merton Community School District student, you have that, we have offered that option all the way through.
So what happens when we hit the max in classrooms? And, cause right now, we have a lot of classrooms that are our goal and we have open enrollment. Are we opening more classrooms when we hit that max? Or are we letting some slide in and have bigger class sizes?
The, the goal would be to continue to maintain our class size expectations. So, for instance, when we take a look at our numbers, and we're gonna have to pull them up from, from last month, right? Cause when we proved open enrollment, yeah, January. You know, for instance, say we have, in our 5K situation, we have an average of 17. Okay, and if we had, and that would be basically, we have room to grow for 15 kids moving into first grade. We wouldn't expect that to happen, that we would get 15 of them or over 15, whether it be new students and/or for the open enrollment too as well. So, historically, we haven't seen that. Now, even with the growth, gee, there was one year, if you recall, that every new kid who came to Merton Community School District was like a sixth grader. And that was an extreme anomaly. It really, really was. So, I do truly believe when we take a look at our open enrollment numbers over time, as well as the amount of growth that, that could possibly be happening within our district, that if we are forced into another section, the financial gain of either the new residents and/or the open enrollment would easily cover that new section.
So, I'm just trying to be very clear, I get this question a lot. So, if we, if you go to like third grade or fourth grade or, well, even second grade, second grade has five, so they probably have less. So, third and fourth, they have smaller groups right now. If we have an open enrollment and families moving in and we're all at, would you say 24?
Right now, we're right around 24, 25, yep.
So, if we hit over, when does it, one or two kids, does that start a whole new class? Like when we start hitting over our max? When do, cause that's a concern for our parents now, is that we're gonna take our resources away from our current kids by not opening another class.
Right.
So, what, what's, what's schedules the?
What's, what's the magic number?
Yeah.
Yeah, the magic number is when we get over 25.
Okay.
Yep, but right now, for instance, that third grade group, it's a big group. It's a really big group. We are financially planning for that fifth section. We certainly are. And almost, and, and again, it's kind of one of those things, seems like we're getting a lot of new second graders this year, uh, already between now and the end of the year. So, I do anticipate that fifth section, just given our enrollment numbers as well too. Cause again, if it tips us over, we are going to, we, we still are in a really good financial spot that that open enrollment, by opening up another section, isn't causing a deficit to the budget, you know, because all of a sudden, we have this new teacher to pay for, yet we still would be able to do that even through the open enrollment docs and/or most new students.
One more question. So, the classroom sizes, have we changed those or have it been set from the very beginning? When's the last time we looked at our classroom sizes?
Oh, probably three, four years ago, probably, when we had to update our open enrollment policy.
One more question. Sorry, I'm saying, so, our policy is, once you're in, you're in, your siblings are in.
Yep.
Is that a are other schools like that in, in our area? Is that a kind of a state recommendation? Or is that just how we, because of our declining enrollment over the years that we enacted that? What's the?
You know, I really don't know.
Okay.
What other school districts do? I would put one caveat is, is attendance is a concern. We do have state statute behind us that since, can, we can actually remove a child for poor attendance from the open enrollment, and we've had to adapt a couple times. But I don't know what other school districts do, and it's just, I guess it's more of a courtesy to the family so that they can continue to plan. And, and obviously, when somebody open enrolled, typically, they shocked around a little bit, and they might be looking for that longevity compared to us taking a look at year by year basis.
We've always been a positive number.
Yeah.
And I don't think, never read it all, never getting ourselves into trouble. You have multiple children and, you know, you get that one that's going into third grade and classroom, you know, two dogs and another child that's in another grade and things didn't wash out to all the dollars that had.
That works. Um, so with IEPs, we have it, so it's only speech right now, correct?
Correct.
So, with going into 4K, obviously, kids don't come in with IEPs. So, is there a way that we look at that? Or do we just accept anybody like at that level and then there's their end for, do you know what I mean?
We, we have yet to enact, state statute would allow us to, once a child becomes eligible for an IEP, for us to possibly revoke their open enrollment status based on the space availability that was set, you know, the year before.
Right now, financially, it's okay.
Right now, right now, we have honored that if a family has come here through open enrollment, whether that be 4K, 5K, or seventh or eighth grade, and all of a sudden, they, they diagnosed with a situation where an IEP is called for, we have not removed them from our school. So, so we just would take that on. Then, once they do have an IEP, state statute does kick in, and I do believe we get around $12,000 for a student with an IEP through open enrollment compared to the normal, say, rough seven, approximately seven thousand. So, an open enrollment student who has an IEP does come with a few more dollars, knowing that, that IEP is typically back behind with case managers, you know, specialists or anything else like that too as well.
So, I.
So, I was gonna say though, we can also deny if during the time that a student is here through open enrollment, that we have accepted a student here that is a student that needs specialized instruction in IEP, but significantly through the course of time, that that IEP and services needed and warranted would change, then we can also go back and then say, we can't meet those services and needs of that student here through what our resources are, and so then, because it's a drastic program change, we could also then
Yep.
revoke someone being here part of our school. Does that make sense? If the IEP changes, that's also a caveat to the process.
Yep.
So, the reason why we're not accepting IEPs right now is, it sounds like there is a way of financial, is there a reason why we don't accept?
Because we, when we take a look at our current case loans for our students in which we are servicing right now, we feel that we cannot, we cannot, and we know, because Lori Lars, there, there's formulas, and we take a look at every IEP, cause we know that every IEP is kind of created equally for speech only versus a significant student with ID or wherever it might be. So, we take a look at it, do this formula, we calculate the amount of FTE, and then that really determines how much space we have in our cross-category of special education department.
By space, you mean bandwidth of the?
Our current staff, yep, our current staff. Correct, yep, yep. Like, for instance, this year, we've had to bring on, I think, there's Suzanne Fuller, because we've identified, we can just continue to, there's some students through our MLSS process and our observation who are new to our school, school, whether it be in 5K or wherever it might be. We always kind of build in a small buffer, because we know referrals are going to happen. In the old days, probably about five, six years ago, a special education student, would, you would, we would be able to bill back everything, every dollar that the district would incur. That changed probably about three, four years ago, I would say. When they changed that open enrollment law. Any other, so Tracy, I guess, does that answer your question from the space standpoint?
How can I answer that question?
So, we've got the sharing, we've got, we've got the end of role and the options if in fact, we ever would need to, from a facility standpoint.
Yeah, you know, we've been, we've been blacked out.
Any other questions? Are we ready for the record? Okay, we are going to call the February Board, the Board. And we start that out with the legislature. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, this meeting has been properly voted in all, you know, voted places.
A second?
The motion of second is during discussion. No, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Motion's carried. We are to approve of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes on Monday, January 31st at 6:15 PM.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to these minutes? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same time, motion's carried. We are to approve of the financial report.
I have an answer.
Uh, make a motion to approve the voucher listing from January 21st, 2022 through February 20, 2022. Starting with payroll, check number 553809, in the amount of $84.97. Check number 553810 through 553811, in the amount of $2,527.98. Direct deposit number 900056160 through 900056272, in the amount of $151,922.96. Direct deposit number 900056273 through 900056383, in the amount of 900, I'm sorry, 159,896.12. Wire transfer number 202100218 through 202100247, in the amount of $296,964.22 for total payroll, $611,396.25. And accounts payable, check number 55101 through 55155, in the amount of $153,304.51. Wire transfer number 202100216 through 202100217, in the amount of $4,3236.43. Wire transfer number 202100235 through 202100237, in the amount of $1,735.56. Credit card transaction 12022, in the amount of $19,944.60. A C H deposit, 212200074 through 212200084, in the amount of $912.31 for total accounts payable of $180,133.41. For total disbursements of $791,529.66.
A second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. We will go ahead and add to the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same time. I looked up, do we need the microphones up there?
You're welcome.
All right.
Yeah, we're, yeah, yeah, it's picking up fine.
Then we are to delegations. We heard AJ, you're the first one on this.
All right. Um, normally, I just like talk and look, but I could talk about this for a long time, so in order to try to winnow myself into one window, I wrote it, so I apologize in advance for not making as much eye contact as usual. So, I'll just get right into it. So, I have it in send, this letter to anyone who wants like a written copy as well. Members of the board, I am coming before you today to express my concerns with some of the comments that were recently made at the Student Achievement Committee meeting on Friday, February 25th. At approximately 47 minutes into the meeting, the notion that we should consider removing social-emotional learning from part of our core curriculum was brought up, and I'm here today to tell you that I vehemently oppose this idea. I want to keep my comments on this brief, as brief as I can be. As it is my understanding that this may be a formal topic of discussion at the March Board of Education meeting. Should this be the case, I'll return with a much more detailed speech prepared. More staff from both buildings and a litany of research for you to engage with that supports the benefits of school-wide SEL for all students. Today though, I'll just highlight a few key points for you all. One comment of concern that was mentioned by a few people in attendance at the Student Achievement Meeting was, this is the job of the parent, not the job of the teacher. This is a concept that I struggle to hear. In my eyes and in the eyes of any good teacher, there is no my job versus your job, but rather an our job. Helping kids find their place within the world is a team effort, and we should all be working collectively, parents, teachers, coaches, community members, et cetera, to ensure that all of our children are equipped and ready to take on the real world, the world that exists beyond just that of reading, writing, and math. I want to briefly highlight through the history that went into the decision to formally adopt a school-wide social-emotional curriculum. In March of 2019, a committee of teachers, counselors, administrators, and board members attended a DPI facilitated workshop around what was at the time, the new Wisconsin competencies in social-emotional learning. After our collective learning, it was determined that a formal committee be formed to address the area of social-emotional learning in our district as highlighted by our strategic plan. On this committee were teachers, parents, counselors, administrators, and board members, two of which are still on our current board today. As a group, we agreed that although many of our teachers were already teaching some of the SEL competencies kind of in the moment, as they occurred, we were not willing to simply leave it to chance that our kids would have the opportunity to learn these imperative skills, and that all kids deserve access to intentional instruction, instruction around these skills. We researched and piloted a variety of social-emotional learning curriculum and brought a proposal to the school board in June of 2020. The Board of Education, which at that time consisted of four of the five current Board of Education members unanimously voted to approve the curriculum for our students. The last comment I want to address from Friday's meeting, kind of happened around like 50 minutes in, was that by taking time in our day to intentionally teach SEL competencies, we're losing academic time. I would highly recommend you look into the National Research in Education that provides data that schools with strong core instruction for all students around SEL have higher scores on academic standardized tests. I know that we're personally not far enough along in our implementation of second step to have valid district data to show at this point. So, I would offer up and encourage you to pull up my personal classroom data. As three of the five of you in particular are very aware, my kind of entire teaching philosophy is rooted in making sure that our students' social-emotional well-being is being met, and that these life skills are being explicitly taught. And my classrooms' academic achievement scores are always high. So, you can kind of use that as like anecdotal data, I guess. So, in closing, I want to reiterate that I believe maintaining a district-wide social-emotional approach is the best way to ensure that our children will succeed in all aspects. Focusing on the whole child is a service we are obligated as a district to provide, and our kids deserve it. I'm more than happy to sit down with anyone on the board to discuss social-emotional learning further, should they wish to ask any questions or engage in dialogue around the topic. And I'll just close with keeping social-emotional learning as a priority for our students is something that I am now and will always be. It's a hill I'm willing to die on, so I am very passionate about it and will happily meet with anybody as a group or individually to, to discuss this in the future. So, that's all I wanted to say, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Tracy, do you want to speak again?
No.
Okay. Then we're done. Delegations, we heard. And we are to the District of Rivers, we're in support, and we have action of the donation.
Yep, so we'd like to present $75 from the Amor family to eighth-grade boys that their families would like to donate $75 for some athletic equipment for the basketball and volleyball teams. So, just looking for a motion to approve the donations as presented.
I'm making a motion to approve the donation as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All the same side, motion's carried, we're on the personnel action.
Thank you, Amor family. Then we have two person, we have two letters of appointment, we just would like to update again to some market adjustments for two of our more permanent or permanent part-time custodians, Jody Willie and Mike Batta. Just looking to bump their starting hourly wage to $15 moving forward, so again, a market adjustment for those two individuals. So, just looking for the board to make a motion to approve the letters of appointment as presented for Mike Batta and Jody Willie.
I'll make a motion to approve the letters of appointment for Jody Willie and Michael Batta as presented.
Second?
The motion of second, discussion. All in favor, then say aye.
Aye.
All the same time, motion's carried. We have the information.
Um, we'd like to, for staff recognition this month, and I know it's in the board packet, and again, we'd like to bring, I do not, you know, read their names and things like that, but we have 20 staff members and ultimately, our MLSS committee, we would like to recognize, and Maria would be here to chit-chat about this a little bit, but I told her I'd pitch in. Real early on, as part of our district improvement innovation process, we were really leaning on this group, the MLSS group, to start making some recommendations and continue to meet, to learn more about obviously, the multi-system of student supports moving forward, and their recommendations are gonna drive a lot of future work. When we asked for volunteers, these 20 individuals were truly volunteering their time. We didn't say that there'd be a stipend or whatever the compensation would be. These individuals, out of the goodness of their heart, said, hey, I can rally behind this because this is what's really important, and we need to do this for our kids, and it is something that we would like to recognize those individuals for to, for the time that they give up and that they're. to uh for the time that they give up, and uh that their efforts and ultimately their future recommendations that are going to be brought forward to this board and through the Student Achievement Committee for those key recommendations, so um actually, I would like to probably name their names, I think that's important, so I'm glad to think about that. So uh we'd like to recognize Natalie Denbauer, first grade teacher, Stacy Rice, fourth grade teacher, Becca Foss, uh seventh and eighth grade special education, Jeanette Sneddon, uh special education, A J Sutter, uh in our science department, Sarah Kaskowitz, in our fifth grade E L A, as well as some G T uh work there. Justine Hamer, one of our interventionists, Lisa Demask, a fourth grade teacher, Casey West, uh speech and language pathologist, Corinne Meisner, our gifted and talented and makerspace coordinator, Abby Kobandi, our literacy specialist, Joy Bruntre, our second grade teacher, Michelle Scardino, seventh grade math, Joanne Kubisch, sixth grade math, Martika Hazelwood, third grade teacher, Jay Posick from our administrative team, Becca Stein, administrative team, Lori Larson, Maria Pacharsky, and Megan Hess, um an eighth grade E L A teacher, sixth and eighth grade E L A teacher. So these individuals truly are are making, are learning and making recommendations outside of the day and continuing to 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 be immersed themselves with literature and data, and to make some really strong recommendations for our board and our administrative team to consider, so just would like to say thank you for those individuals, and uh again, look forward to to seeing all the work that they they are recommending for us in the near, near future. Thank you, so thank you.
Okay, Roger.
Actually, if I could step, I have one more piece of information I came across after the the board packet, and that is the uh as we know, the C D C has released new guidance, and the federal government has uh you know, at the same time, basically relaxed their mandate around public transportation and requirement of masks. And within that recommendation, they have highlighted that public and private school transportation for students and pupils is now recommended instead of mandate. So um given our, again, part of our our COVID plan has not dealt with transportation because it was federally mandated. Um I just kind of, with the permission of the board, uh just kind of consensus, I guess, but I I think we just follow federal mandate built in our conversations to uh this this uh this morning. You know, we don't argue if they would raise the speed limit for school buses, you know, or or anything, so mandates are mandates that we have to follow. I think that's a change, or change, I'm sorry, change. But um so given that the mandate, the federal mandate has changed from required to recommended, I do believe that the school districts should be corresponding with that federal uh recommendation, since it has split from required to recommended. And uh it would be my intention to notify our families that uh beginning probably tomorrow morning, I'll probably send it out, that uh now masks are now being recommended instead of required on our school buses for student transportation. So just kind of wanted to bring that up, I have double-checked that with bus company, and I got about three or four legal emails on it too as well, so it's something that the feds have to revise, so just wanted to bring that up to the board as well.
I just want to say, back to the staff.
Oh, okay.
I really, really appreciate this, I think we have great staff, and it's, I think it's a wonderful way to highlight our staff and get more information, so I appreciate you guys doing that.
Okay, now we're a maybe that works as student achievement.
Sure, last Friday, our our Student Achievement Committee, uh we got through two out of our three uh items, and uh while we were, we did hear an update from Becca and Jay on how we were doing on the district uh improvement and innovation plan. Also, they talked about some of their workings there too as well, and then we did focus a lot on the district dashboard. So that district dashboard is something that uh we would like to continue to showcase, basically, it's a transparency and a accountability factor for the school district, and it measures our progress on many multiple measures. Um there was a lot of feedback, and thank you very much for the people who were supplying feedback to them. Um and again, that did lead to an S E L conversation that we we will be addressing, but I think that the question is, is how do we measure the effectiveness and 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 what do we want to really kind of get out of that, and we can certainly revisit that uh in March, and we certainly will. But the data dashboard discussion focused around, a lot of our conversations focused around, how do we really measure the three main areas in our strategic plan, that would be academic achievement, inspiring curiosity, and personal growth. Well, the inspiring curiosity part is kind of the one that is is most, you know, kind of, how do you measure that? Um so um through discussion, it seems like the recommendations was going to cause that kind of formal measure of our re-inspired curiosity. Um you'll see in the item that we didn't get to, again, we tried to really uh give kids opportunities outside of our core, and ultimately, hopefully through the quarter, they're continuing to spark curiosity, but really kind of continuing to uh you know, give kids the opportunities, and like Maria would say, we want to create opportunities here so that when they get to Arrowhead High School, when they start to choose, it it funnels into some sort of pathway at Arrowhead High School. Uh and uh that was really important for us as we're considering to continue to create those pathways of the encore explorers and the like this, as we continue to go through there, so our district dashboard, obviously, it's it's linked to the uh um the agenda and it it's out there, um you'll see a strong progress monitoring of our academic achievement, and then as well as that personal growth too, really making sure that we are growing kids um throughout the district as they continue to move forward there too as well. So uh from a student achievement standpoint, we'll continue to have that conversation, and uh and again, we'll get to item number three a little bit later in the month of March, so. Okay.
We're on to new business.
So um Elbrook Schools, uh they have the opportunity to, they have some specialty people in the area of death and heart of fury, so um since we do not have that unique skill set here, because it is pretty uncommon, and again, it's a very um small membership of our of our population, we do contract out, and again, all we do with Elbrook is is that Elbrook builds us as they are here, per I E Ps, which call for death and heart and services, so um a very familiar agreement, Elbrook works for, I do believe, almost all the Washington schools, so they're kind of the chief in charge of that too, so um just looking for a motion to approve the Elbrook School C C six oh three agreement for the twenty two, twenty three school year.
I'll make a motion to approve the sixty six oh three agreement with Elbrook Schools for special education services for the twenty two, twenty three school year as presented.
A second.
The motion of second. Is there any discussion? All favor then say aye. All the same time, motions carried. Uh unit event projects that's uh.
So um the district actually for several years has been pursuing these, and and George Urcher, our uh our chief maintenance and H VAC specialist, has been doing the best we can, but one of the the continued conversation pieces is our unit events. You know, kind of academic environment, they're loud, inconsistent at times too, as well, if you ask our kids and staff too, so. Uh so what we did is we went out and bid, uh and again, we do believe that we have apples to apples, because basically everybody is bidding on the same unit event. Uh the two different unit events that we do have as well there. Um we are, and working with April, we are eyeing up S R two funds for this, and it does fit perfectly in those that that category. And uh it also follows, again, we've been very well versed in what if if you are going to go to contractors and things like that, these contractors do fit uh the requirements for that S R two funding as well too, so. Um again, it's something that's been on our our facility plan and projects to to kind of get it done, and we'd really love to do that this summer uh to be able to do that, so uh the administration is recommending to board, make a motion to approve the use of a hundred and ninety thousands of S R funds for Burt and Intermediate School Unit Event Project in the project to be awarded to Ilingsworth Killgas. Specifically, S R two. S R two funds.
Correct.
Does a hundred and ninety cover it?
A hundred and ninety will cover it, we feel. Yep. Um they, their bid was a hundred and seventy nine thousand. If I recall.
It was the the link plus ten thousand.
Yep, and we have worked with our, we we've got Patty, our our K and C control guys are on it, and they said this is what it would cost to make sure that those get the new control systems to.
I'll make a motion to approve the use of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars of S R two funds for Community School and Unit Event Project. And the project to be awarded to Ilingsworth Killgas.
Second. Hey, we have a motion in a second, discussion.
We use these guys in the past. Yes, we have, Roger. Yep, they've done a lot of work for the district. The other school, we we use butter a little bit, and we 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 use helm because they combined with a couple other. Both of these are all three very quality, but Ilingsworth, we get a lot of.
Time frame for when this would be done is a.
Summer thing, it's a summer thing, yep, we're shooting for July and August, yep, they need about a week to complete all of them. Yep. They're very, very confident, and that's one of the reasons why we wanted to, they really felt confident that they'd be able to store them too as well, to depend here, so. I look, you're out there. We had a door stuck in Mexico for six months, long time, and it got stuck in the canal, yep. Okay, cool, sorry.
Now, favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same time, motions carried. Okay, we got one other purchase, and that's um.
Speaking of the supply chain, we'll go to the next topic. Um again, working with uh April and Jim, um we do have uh the the personal computers, uh the computers that are work with the uh with the smart boards and that our teachers use. Um again, our immediate replacement, we have about sixty three of them across the district that we would like to replace, as well as about twenty eight monitors too as well. Um Jim went out and found our uh uh got free bids, and uh the whole big came in with P D S. Yep. And we use them before too as well, they have good, good partners with us too as well, so again, the reason this is a budgeted item, we have it planned for uh next fiscal year, depending on when we when we gather them, but again, just to be proactive, to get them here as soon as possible, that's why we would really love to trigger that uh this month, so. Um the administration is recommending to board, make a motion to approve the purchase of new P C P C computers from P D S as presented. Thanks, Jim. But again, for having Jim create this page.
The group of purchase of new P C computers from P D S as presented.
And a second, any discussion?
Why do we need um P C computers if all of the staff has Chromebooks?
Sure, so um let me take a step back, so I'm not super loud with my microphone. Um so when I look at the, what we would need for a prime, like a primary working device for our teachers, I look at the abilities of a P C over a Chromebook. Um for instance, like right now, there's a lot of our teachers that have a smaller Chromebook like this. Working on a Chromebook like that over the course of the day would get, it'd get hard, it'd get hard, it'd get hard, it gets hard on my eyes. Um the main thing that I look at whenever I purchase a device is life expectancy. Google guarantees five years when you buy a Chromebook. Now, they can extend it, they can decrease it, depending on what they want. So when I look at purchasing devices, like with students, hey, Chromebook, great, five years, we're good to go. For a teacher P C, um in order to get something comparable in size and power, um so you know, with a bigger monitor and as powerful as like this one is, which is one of the better ones, we'd probably be spending close to five to six hundred dollars on a Chromebook over five years, whereas I can get a P C with the way they're built now, with more solid-state, less moving parts, I can get those to last seven to eight years. Um and I also don't have to worry as much about break fix with PCs, because they're going to be set in a place, not moved around. Um and AJ can contest to this, because he was one of my Guinea pigs for a while, trying to use his uh Chromebook as his primary device. The connections start to get loose, after you use them a lot, because there's no docking stations for Chromebooks. And then really, when you break a Chromebook, it's replacing everything, because it's all integrated into one board. Um and right now, especially looking at parts for Chromebooks, you're better off just buying a brand new one. Um so it, right now especially, it it's definitely a cost thing. Um and also planning forward, if we ever were to get into a situation where we have to do virtual learning, a P C being able to run multiple needs during breakouts, it's going to be better and easier for the teacher to do it on a Windows-based device, rather than trying to have it on a Chromebook. So that's kind of what's going to go with it. Yep.
Any other questions? All favor then say aye. Aye, all the same time, motions carried.
We are on to future meeting again. So so we have March fourteenth, a couple weeks, a couple weeks to turn around here uh at six o'clock. And again, right before that, we will have a student achievement today, I would like to start student achievement at four forty five, does that work with everybody? Because we do have an extra item to talk about, uh we can start that at four forty five. That would be fantastic, so, and then also, we will be having a closed session afterwards, talk about compensation and and things across the district afterwards too as well, so. Um and then the twenty fifth, obviously, we will uh we'll have a new board, and then we'll reorganize, and then the twenty third is the Monday before the birthday, or Memorial Day. That works for everybody too. Change your insurance.
Sounds great.
For an agenda, I remember on March fourteenth, I'd like to uh talk with somebody, you know, between now and and then, but I I would like us to establish a S R spending policy matrix, if you will. Um I appreciate the fact that, you know, the hundred and eighty five was brought to us, I think that's a great thing. Um but I don't know if we actually have a policy set in place, these are kind of one-time dollars, and you think about S R two and S R three, and and wherever we do end up in S R three, you know, that is potentially like ten percent of our budget, you know, that we could utilize over a two-year period, so really maybe five percent. Yep. And two years ago, but it's a significant dollar amount, so I just think from a um uh transparency, I think that's a good thing to do, uh not that I have any issues with what's been happening, I just think it's now kind of more finalized as far as dollar amounts, where it's been a little bit in limbo. And then the other piece of that is, I think, uh what would be uh I think good from a transparency perspective was periodic reporting. So I don't know if that's maybe every other um board meeting, or whatever we want to decide, but I just think of periodic reporting of accounting of, here's what we were allocated, here's what we, you know, either spent today or have allocated today. Obviously, knowing that like in S R three, we'll allocate dollars to be spent over two-year period, and so just to keep the public, you know, in the loop of what's going on, certainly. So I'll I'll title it S R spending plan. And because we we do have all of that ready to go. Yeah, I know, are you? Yep. No, I I I I've seen summaries, and I just think from a formality standpoint, I just think it's a lot of money that has been uh given at one time, and I know we're utilizing it the right way, I just, it's just one of those formality things. So I'll put it down as S R spending plan and reporting. Okay. We do that.
Any other?
Second.
The motion of second, all favor then say aye.